Good to go.
Good to go.
All right, we are in session. Instructions on exiting the building in the event of an emergency, you go out either door, go left or go right. Agenda additions, deletions, or changes in the order of agenda items. Hearing none. We'll move on to number three, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Anybody? No? Okay. Announcements and staff report.
Yep. Yeah, I attended the the Association of Vermont Conservation Commission's Conservation Summit, which they haven't had for a few years, last ten days ago. And it was very interesting, worthwhile going. There were too many concurrent sessions to sort of focus on any of them, but I came away with some interesting resources or sources that were pointed out. One was about Boulder, Colorado, something called Cool Boulder, which is a community-led, nature-based climate action plan. It's a long-term campaign to create partnerships between the city of Boulder and the people of Boulder and various, as many partner organizations as they can. They've got basically three focus areas. Pollinator pathways, you know, to restore the natural environment in which pollinators can thrive. This is shorthand for what was in there. Connected canopies, which is preserve and connect urban forest woodlands and woodlands with planting of appropriate species for the time and the climate. And more importantly, absorbent landscapes, meaning they mean wetlands. And they want to protect, expand, and restore them. And they made a statement that absorbent landscapes or wetlands hold more carbon, more water, and more thermal energy, helping cool the city as well as prevent dangerous flooding. That was one of the more interesting ones. There was one that doesn't apply to us, but does apply to larger cities. It's called Singapore Garden City. You can look it up. I'm not going to spend much time. It was basically how Singapore's Garden City vision fused nature and urban design. And they compared Hong Kong, which is a concrete jungle with which is a green oasis of calm. I have personally experienced both of them. Very, very.
Yep, somebody's got a microphone on online.
It's the Bailey residence.
Sorry, Michael.
That was, that was it. There was a lot going on in the day during the day, but I came away with those two interesting perspectives from elsewhere that we could learn from. That Singapore is more focused on high-rise gardens in the air, basically, and huge. And there's only a little bit of land in Singapore, so they build very high fifty-story apartment buildings. Eighty-eight percent of Singaporeans own their apartments or homes, and that is largely due to the Singapore Housing Board subsidizing. I used to have an office there, so I'm familiar with it.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody, anybody else? Steph, actually, I do want to say, welcome back to Kelsey. Yes, we missed you. I know Paul has missed you.
That was going to be my big announcement.
I was gonna say, welcome back. Paul's happy to see you.
Very true.
Go ahead, Paul.
No, that's my really big one. Another small one. Good news in city center that we have just approved, or it was a reapproval and then a change to a new building on Garden Street. Immediately behind Healthy Living will be a four-story building. It, the new configuration will be a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twenty dwelling units, a cafe, and a childcare center now. That's the new addition to add a childcare center. And of course, the the connected play area that goes with childcare centers. Yes, very exciting.
Excellent. Okay. On to item number five, public hearing on proposed amendments to the land development regulations. I don't know if we need to read them out. I know we do need a motion to start the public hearing. Real quick. If you are in the audience and would like to speak, we do ask when you raise your hand, you have to come up to either, either the table or the podium there. Give us your full name and then you can speak. If you're online, we just ask that you turn your camera on and let us know that you would like to speak. So I guess we need a motion to open the hearing.
And twenty-two oh eight.
All in favor? Hi. Okay, we are rolling. The public. Would anyone like to speak?
Sir, can you just hit the little button right in front there, a little green light will turn on?
If you could just give us your full name.
Martin Maitner. I'm in South Burlington. And my understanding is that this is having to do with the opening up of the Hannaford for Tesla to have a presence in Vermont. And I am a Tesla owner. Just had, just got one this, earlier this year. And I actually just recently had to go down to Latham, New York. And I'm going to have to go back again two weeks just to get my car serviced. So it's going to be a big big help to Tesla owners to have this available for Tesla. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Great. Thank you.
Duncan, can I clarify? And I appreciate his comment. It is not just about Tesla and Hannaford, though it is about a larger zoning change of adjusting the auto district. So just so everyone's aware of that, this is a broader zoning change that affects shifting our current auto zone in general. Thank you.
Do you want to give some background on that real quick? That would probably be a good idea.
Sure. Let me take just one minute, because I think that's good table setting for everybody. So there are two proposed changes in the land development regulations. One is to realign a couple of the zoning districts. So what you see in here largely are in the red are commercial one residential fifteen on the left is the current, and the blue is the commercial one auto. On the right is the same two districts, but reorganized slightly. And then at the bottom of the screen, there's a change also to propose to move two parcels from commercial from commercial one auto to commercial two. What this would do is the new areas that are in blue or in purple would be enabled to have auto dealerships within them, including but not limited to Tesla. And then the areas that were blue and have become red would no longer, none of them have currently car dealerships in them, but it would no longer permit them as a future use. Instead, focusing the emphasis on the mixed residential commercial that is the commercial one residential fifteen. The other zoning change would be to clean up some allowed uses and make them a little bit more consistent throughout the district other than auto district.
Yes, good sir.
My name's Scott Pennington. I am also a Tesla owner and just strongly support the change to the zoning regulations. There are, I think, four Teslas in our immediate neighborhood of Knoll Circle, Dubois Drive, Highland Terrace. We picked ours up about a month ago, but we had to go down to Paramus, New Jersey to pick it up. And servicing is a distance away. So it would just be more convenient for all Tesla owners and I think it would encourage electric vehicle usage if it was easier to pick up your Tesla and get your Tesla service. So strongly in support of the zoning changes.
Yes, Mike.
One of the, one of the factors that certainly I considered, and I think the commission did, is that this was an an empty building. And repurposing an empty building that's been empty for some years is a big, is a big plus for us, including gains in jobs and the convenience of Tesla owners.
Yep, strongly agree with that as well.
Yes. Yeah, yep.
My name is Mort Shapiro. And I am a resident of South Burlington and the Longmont. And I'm also the Nissan and Carter's Incorporated, which is at ten ninety-five Sheldon Road and ten eighty-nine Sheldon Road. And I so appreciate that everybody that owns a Tesla now might have a place to service at last great. My question is that over the last twenty-seven years, okay, over twenty-seven years, I've worked a long time to own the property there. I finally owned the property after small business administration loan and whatnot. And if I choose to sell my property or my business to a bigger car company like Dan Goldkamp and St. Albans, so it's a bigger company. And that company wants to buy the land that's next to mine to expand it. Does this mean that I'm landing? Is that what that means? I just want to make sure of that.
How can we see the map? I need to, I don't, I have the reference though.
Because on one side it's a cemetery. And you know, that's that's going to be. So does that, I guess what I'm saying is of my future and my family's future and my employees and everything, I'm just trying to, you know, figure that out because although all these folks, you guys or whoever has Teslas, that's, you know, that money goes not in Vermont. You know, you know, Freedom Nissan and Carter's, we sell electric cars. You know, we're one of the largest electric car dealers, the Nissan in the United States of America. We have significant investment in electric cars. We have chargers that are available twenty-four seven to Tesla owners and many times Tesla owners there. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what is, what is really happening here? You know, and that's what I want to figure out. So am I going to be limited by my, my multimillion dollar investment that's taking years and years? Anyway, it's now going to be landlocked or, you know, I'm not too adept at all this. But I'm trying to figure out, you know, how this affects my people.
I guess the proposed, as proposed, the land south of your property would be rezoned, so it would no longer be C one auto, it would be C one R fifteen, which does not allow auto as a use.
So basically, I'm locked in. I can't explain.
Well, the, so, so let me, let me back it up slightly here. So what you're seeing on the screen, and I believe Mr. Shapiro, your property with the Freedom Nissan is this one at the white roof right there. So the currently, the C one auto district is this blue outline, so it includes the property to the north and the property to the south that has a McDonald's and a variety of small businesses in the, in the mall there. So the proposed change would, would redraw the district as follows, so that the properties, the property to the north that I believe is currently Carter's Cars would remain in the C one auto, but the property to the south that is part of the larger planned unit development that includes the housing back here and the Larkin Terrace would change to C one R fifteen.
So, so if, if I wanted to expand, I would not be able to expand my business.
Not to the south.
I can't do it the other way, because it's a cemetery. So what I'm saying is, so what you guys and Pete folks are looking at is doing that. Now, I understand that that Hannaford's building is a vacant building, but there's tons of vacant buildings on Sheldon Road. So what's the big rush? Because Tesla wants to do it? I mean, I don't understand what's behind all this. I mean, my future. Okay, I mean, flat out, if, you know, can't sell my business or my property because it's landlocked. So these nice people can get their Tesla serviced? I mean, that was their choice to go to France, to Jersey, buying Tesla. That's their business, you know what I mean? It's like, if I want to buy something, I can only get it in Boston, I gotta drive all the way to Boston. So, I mean, but Tesla is not a Vermont company. It's like a big giant, richest person in the world company. So I don't understand why this is all happening so fast and what's going on, because all the time I've been in Vermont, it's like nothing gets, gets changed or anything like that. So what's the motivation? I'm just curious, because my livelihood and my years and years of sweat equity is being affected here. That's, I'm just curious.
I mean, we were presented with a proposal that took a large vacant building that's been vacant for quite a while, and we looked at repurposing.
You know, it came out, a building was vacant for a long time. Nobody changed that. I mean, this, it's only been vacant since the start of the pandemic, when the Hannaford's opened up a new place. And isn't that owned by Barnolo?
That I don't know.
And isn't Hannaford still paying Barnolo the rent?
That I do not know, sir.
Okay, so what are we, what are we doing here? I mean, it's a vacant building. Okay, there's other vacant buildings on Sheldon Road. But, you know, we, we the, we sell electric cars, a lot of electric cars. We've been invested in electric cars for almost fourteen years. Hundreds and hundreds of electric cars, new and used we sell. We have, we send technicians to school in all over the country to be trained in that. I get, I get ton mortgages for, for equipment that we bought to service electric cars. You know, you charge at my place, I get, I get two fast chargers that are available twenty-four seven. So I guess my thing is this is it. Why is this such a big yang to bring Tesla there? That's, I mean, what's the thing? I mean, these are nice people and, and, and great, but you know, are we going to open up to other things and, you know, Amazon store or whatever? I mean, why, why is, what's the big rush?
Duncan, can I make a comment? I, I would like to say that I hear you. I think we all hear you, and I would like to acknowledge that we did not discuss the impact on the businesses where we were going to be changing. It was not part of our conversation. So
because I can't
Good, let me just finish what I was going to say.
And I don't want to be forced to reduce my business when it's back tough enough as it is with the chip shortage. You know, we went from selling almost two hundred cars a month to like fifty because of the chip shortage. So and now I'm looking at, okay, have a Tesla come into town and, and, and take my electric car business? I mean,
So
that's going to hurt.
So what the, the comment I'm taking from this, and I think we can discuss it after, is simply that I think we can acknowledge that we did not discuss the direct impact on the businesses that are within the zoning area that we changed. I'm just making that comment, and I think we can discuss it after, but to acknowledge that we've heard it.
Yep, okay.
So I think we did, though, discuss that we want to encourage more residential. Right?
We did discuss.
For areas that are not currently car dealers to convert that zoning to promote housing in that.
This is what I meant, that we can discuss it after, because this is still the public hearing. I'm just acknowledging that we didn't specifically say what ramifications would there be to those businesses. So for later.
Data that I'm happy to open up to you folks that what a big part of our business this is. It's a big part, they only sell used electric cars. Like when we sell a brand new Nissan Lee, we usually trade in Nissan Lee. Have you guys been working with the Mileage Smart program? Do you know we're one of the biggest dealers in the Mileage Smart program, helping people, Vermont people that can't afford electric cars, get used electric cars? Where do you think we get those used electric cars then? Because somebody like these nice people come in, they lease a new electric car, then two or three years, they done with the lease, and we sell it as a used electric car, Mileage Smart to, you know, Vermont. So I mean, it's just, it's just a little bit this is, you know. And, you know, I just I just had to just
Okay.
Not a lot of them, but expect them, but that's great. Anytime I've done anything since I've owned a dealership, I always went to Ray Valerius, how do you comply and sign, whatever. I'm the first one. In fact, as Paul, I just redid my kitchen and I went down with a building permit and everything, everything by the book, everything the right, right?
Okay.
I mean, it's like, so, so what are we going to do? We're going to, we're going to take the people that I got to lay off and start at Tesla, you know, work Elon Musk. You know, so and just keep a look at it, wanting the information, I mean, whatever you want, you know, but it's just
Okay. Yeah, yeah, hold on one sec, Jeff. Sorry, sorry. Sorry, you finished? Yeah, okay. All right, Jeff, if you want to come up, yeah.
My name's Jeff Seward. I've been in the, uh, back in South Burlington for thirty-five years. I'm with that. We're both Tesla owners, been owning Tesla Model X for six and a half years, you're one of the first in the area. This has been talked about, the service station here in the area, three years. We've been talking about. Again, there are dozens and dozens, there are six or so Tesla owners that are neighbors. And there are dozens and dozens of Tesla owners in this area, and there are hundreds or even thousands in the state. All we want is to be able to service our cars locally. Our service for Tesla is in Lake New York, Montreal, or native, native Massachusetts. When I go there to get my car serviced, I got to stay overnight. Or I leave at six o'clock in the morning for a ten o'clock appointment. If they can fix my car during the day, which is hopeful, I'll be home at ten o'clock again. These are the kinds of hopeful things, this is a building, as you mentioned, that is maybe resistance and ready to be occupied for years. And this has been talked about as a something something good for people that are doing the right thing, an electric vehicle, non-moving vehicle for the community. And I just don't understand why, you know, this discussion is really on. Is that all I have to say?
Thank you.
On a point of clarification, which is the parcel that Mort is concerned about? I'm looking at the map here, and I'm not quite sure I see it.
The current dealership is
South of Saturn Way.
It's, if you look, if there's the cemetery, it's just south of the cemetery.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's, I believe it's the property south of that that he was concerned about that.
Yeah, right, right now, there's urgent care facility, Citizens Bank.
Artemis Fitness.
McDonald's.
Yep, Zen Gardens, McDonald's. Is that the property we're, you're talking about?
That was the property he was referring to.
And you, you bought that property with the intention of?
Well, let's, let's, let's finish the public comment, and then we can discuss this afterwards, once we close the public area. Yeah.
Duncan, can I say one comment, one thing too?
Hold, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can I, thank you.
Were you all set, Jeff? Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I'm trying really hard to not think of this in a brand-centric way. I can't, because we're a planning commission and we don't deal with tough brands. So we're supposed to be judging this. I'm kind of saying it out loud. I'm saying it to you. I'm saying it to you. We're looking at a zoning change that has to do with auto. So I'm really trying as I evaluate what we are asked to do, to look at it from a zoning change perspective of moving, moving auto from here to there. So my, I'm, I'm working really hard to do that. So if people have comments about that outside of a brand, that would be helpful to me personally. I'm just passing that along.
Let's just
Duncan, can we clarify the point? Does Mort own those properties or is it a future?
I do not believe so. Nope, no, no. It should be, yep, yep.
It should be lit as bright green.
It is.
Great, thank you.
I'm Kathy Easton. I live on Holmes Road, and the reason I'm here is that I saw this notice in the paper, and it mentioned Holmes Road. And anything that comes up that may have an impact on our neighborhood, on traffic, on water quality, the lake, the environment, our neighborhood tries to keep track of what's going on. And we rely on the planning commission and the DRB when we come to meetings to receive, you know, well-considered, informed information about whatever's on here. So as soon as I saw this, I went to the regulations to try to figure out what a commercial one auto or commercial two or all of these designations. And then when I came here tonight, I guess somehow I expected that I would receive more information. Now, maybe that's coming. Maybe you're going to discuss this more, but I was frankly quite surprised that it was mentioned that you hadn't considered the impacts on if that's true, of some of the neighboring businesses. So whether this is Tesla or anything else, and no, I, I don't own a Tesla. I have a two thousand and five Volvo station wagon. But I, I understand that the Tesla owners want to have their vehicles serviced, but I've seen proposals come up before boards over these many years. A proposal comes in one way, and then it changes over time. I mean, do you actually have a proposal on hand of what any car dealership plans to do with that area?
Do, I don't believe we have a proposal. Is that right?
No.
Okay.
Correct.
Can, can I just also clarify, Paul? I'm looking at the two old zone versus new zone maps, and I just want to clarify where Holmes Ave is on this.
It's Holmes Road.
Holmes Road.
Holmes Road.
Sorry.
It's next to the fire station.
That, yeah, that, is that right at the bottom of, so that is in contact with the area that has a zoning change of going from on the northwest corner of Holmes and Shelburne would be converting from commercial two to commercial one.
So just a piece of information on the screen here, where my mouse is going back and forth, that's Holmes Road here. The yellow in this case is the commercial two district, which is a residential and commercial district that does allow auto sales and various other uses. The blue is the commercial one auto district. What is proposed to happen here, and, and I understand the different colors. These, these three parcels, right where my mouse is, there are two auto dealerships and the city's fire station. Number two would switch from being commercial one auto to commercial two, remaining the ability to have auto sales, a variety. It's, it's a somewhat different subset of commercial uses that are allowed. Auto sales are allowed. One thing that's different is that light industries such as the feral distributing that's, that's next to it would be allowed in the purple, is not currently allowed in the, in the C one auto.
So other than that one change, there is no change on the zoning on Holmes Road.
On Holmes Road, correct.
Yes.
No, I understand that, but I guess I'm kind of surprised that, you know, it's mentioned Holmes Road in here. And I sense there's a little lack of clarity about where it is, what it is. And also, are, are you saying in this that whatever dealership goes in to the former Hannaford is going to use that for sure, that existing building? Or are they going to destroy it and build something new? Do you know?
Don't believe they would destroy it. I believe they may adapt it, but I don't believe it would be destroyed, no.
I don't know that from our zone. Don't know that from our zoning though, our zoning does not stipulate that, our zoning does not stipulate that. So, they can use, right, Paul, I mean, I think we need to be clear about that, because we did look at an option.
I, I believe.
It's their intention to repurpose.
Yes.
Zoning doesn't say that, I think we just need to be clear about what the zoning says, just to be fair. Because Tesla, whoever this brand may not pursue, and if we've made the change, somebody else can. So, to be clear, I think the zoning change would permit them to do whatever you can do in a C one.
Right, which also includes a number of other uses.
Yep.
Such as retail that is currently there, such as residential, such as a, a variety of uses, there's. You'll be discussing this a little later on, but the distinction between the commercial one. Residential fifteen and the commercial one auto district is fairly, they're very similar districts, except for the auto sales being also allowed and. Uh, and, uh, kennels and things like that.
Right, so what we're looking at, we have to look at as a zoning change for the next five years, no matter who's there.
Okay, well, I do understand that and I don't, I don't know your regulations enough to see exactly what the difference is between. One kind of zoning and another. However, uh, sometimes plans change down the line. And I, and I do believe that South Burlington needs to encourage business. I just think that if, if the public is, is being offered a chance to comment on and learn about a proposal. I think, um, the public really needs to have a good understanding of what these designations could do. In the long term and the, the true impact that they're going to have on the neighbors. So. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Hi, uh, my name is Matt Cota, resident of South Burlington, city councillor. Just so this body knows that if this proposal is forwarded to the city council, I've let Chair Really know. I've let Paul know and Jesse Baker know that I will recuse myself from any decision. And the reason why is I own a, um, trade association management company called Meadow Hill. And one of my clients is the Vermont Vehicle and Automotive Distributors Association. Um, many of the people, individuals, local companies that own property in South Burlington and sell cars in South Burlington. Um, I want to lift up Monica's comments, this not, this not about brands. What you're doing, um, will allow any manufacturer, any retailer to move in. If certain manufacturers go the way of the DeLorean, another manufacturer could come in in the zoning district. And that's an important point that, that Monica raised, and it's a good point. And the Auto Dealers Association, which I represent, does not oppose expanding. The C one district to allow a new manufacturer that isn't currently here to sell cars. Not at all, we welcome it. The opportunity to bring more of the car buying public to South Burlington is a good thing. It's a good thing for all of the competitive businesses. What we're nervous about is taking away. So, you've given a large chunk, you've added a large chunk of land to sell cars. The Lowe's property and the old Hannaford property, good. You've also taken away a key strip on Shelburne Road. And this is why it's important, just to step back a little bit and think about what's going to happen with the energy transformation. As we move to more electric vehicles. Every single franchise owner has requirements from their franchisee to install fast chargers. And they may be different depending on what the franchise is, but in many cases, those have to be out in front and open to the public. Shelburne Road will be, if this is to come to pass, where every manufacturer is required as. Next month, they'll pass a regulation, the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, requiring auto manufacturers to deliver in greater numbers. Electric vehicles or zero emission vehicles up until twenty thirty-five, when all have to be electric vehicles in Vermont. And if that happens, Shelburne Road will be become a fast charging network where people will get off the highway because they know. There are half a dozen auto dealers that will have fast charging. The gas stations that were there, those will be changed for, be repurposed. And so, to think about transit in Vermont, think about how we're going to adapt to an all-electric future of transportation. And how Shelburne Road is integral to that vision. I'm just asking, I don't think you should take away, at this point. I know you're adding, I know we care about housing, but might a solution be to take that land, that front Shelburne Road. That you're removing from Autozone and make it a C two, similar to the, the, the zoning to the south of it. So, it would allow residential, should that property owner decide to go that route, they'd be permitted to do that. It would allow the expansion of, of a local company that's expanding their footprint so they could sell more electric vehicles and provide fast charging. And coffee and other retail things. I think that would, in many ways, alleviate the concern. While we welcome more, more land in South Burlington being available for car dealers to sell cars. We don't want to lose what we currently have. So, that might be a solution where you can have the best of both worlds. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Sorry, I'm not usually good at this stuff, so, sorry, and if I talk too much, tell me just be quiet. So, a car dealership. Which I've been working with since nineteen eighty-six, has deliveries of cars. Which require car carriers coming in and out all hours of the night, which happened on Shelburne Road all the time. The other thing is that Tesla, great company, blah, blah, blah. They, all their trade-ins get sent to the auction, they have their own lane at the Mannheim Auto Auction. That's how many trade-ins they have. So, that means that car carriers are gonna be coming in to that area, I don't know if they go down Holmes Road or whatever. But they're gonna be coming in, picking up cars, taking cars, batteries being shipped in for service, all that other stuff. So, I don't know if you guys have looked at that or, or what the deal is. The other thing is, to address your point of the building. Every single manufacturer requires us franchisee, us dealers. To have new facilities, so if, if, whether it's Tesla or Lexus or Ford. If they were to come in, the Hannaford building would not look the way it looks. It would have to be completely redone with the new glass and everything, kind of like we did ten years ago and now we're gonna have to do, you know, next year. So, you know, that's where I'm at, I mean, I just, I, I would just hope that you would, you know, look at that. And the other thing is that if, if Elon Musk wants to have a Tesla dealership, let him buy some property on Shelburne Road. Let, let him buy where, where the bank is, let him, let him buy where Larkin owns or whatever, this already zoned. Why do we have to change the rules for him? You know, I mean, it, it, that's just, you know, I mean, wh, why is he any different than me? Why, I, I, it took me twenty years to own my property, I didn't go and say, oh, you know what? I wanna, I wanna own, I wanna buy the property in where Facet is used to be. Cause it was an empty building and it's gonna be cheaper, cause it's not on Shelburne Road, can you rezone it? No, I played by the rules. And, and that's what it's supposed to be, and, you know, and, and the other thing is that. You, you, you look at all the stuff that goes on at a car dealership and trucks coming in at night and stuff. And, and like you said about people pulling off the road, the car carriers coming in, you know, that's. You know, and, and, and if it's, you know, and, and I listen to these nice Tesla owners, oh, I gotta drive my, that's their choice. Okay, that's their choice. When, when my son during, during COVID, moved from Nevada to Vermont. Cause of COVID and my daughter-in-law is, is, has immune issues, so they had to rent, uh, like a RV. Now, the place that they rented the RV from, there was no place in Vermont to return it. He had to drive all the way to Massachusetts, get a ride, come back to return it. So, there are certain things in this world that you might choose to buy or you might choose to get that aren't available in Vermont. That's just the way it goes, so, you know, but to change all the rules and everything and, and affect everybody's businesses. And these people's houses and stuff. You know, you know, it's, you know.
We, we appreciate your feedback, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, Liam, you, Liam, if you wanna speak.
So, I'm Liam Murphy, as you know, and I do represent Tesla. I recognize that the hearing is solely about a change in zoning, taking the Lowe's and the current Hannaford. Parcels and making them eligible for Auto Zones. But I just did want to respond to some, um, misunderstandings or about the, the actual proposal. I have seventy-five percent, uh, approve, you know, engineered plans that are ready to go after, if you do approve the zoning. There is gonna be no change in the parking lot, there is no change in the building, the front facade will have a little. Uh, higher, uh, uh, wall to put Tesla on the front of it. Other than that, nothing changes. Second, uh, this gentleman mentioned that, uh, cars would go down Holmes Road. I think he misses understands where Holmes Road is. It couldn't, uh, actually, cause Holmes Road does not connect to, uh.
Yeah, 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 Mark, please let him speak.
Yeah, uh, so, you know, i, 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 it's, uh, silly to think that, uh, anybody's gonna go down Holmes Road. To come off Shelburne Road, to go past a, a bank on the right, uh, a, uh, Burger King. Uh, on the other side and the Lowe's dealership in order to come in and out to Shelburne Road. Um, so, th, there, uh, uh, if, if you do approve it, Tesla would like to move forward, there. Uh, have prepared plans and I just wanna make sure that that's clear. What, what I also think isn't clear is that the, the Freedom Nissan dealership property isn't changing at all. Uh, there's, you have not changed the zoning of that property. Uh, it's around that property, there's a developed parcel to the south that has McDonald's and, uh. Uh, a, uh, an urgent care center and a barbecue place and a former Chinese restaurant, it's a fully hundred percent developed property. Uh, that is changing, uh, uh, there. Um, so, I, I just wanted to, to, to focus on the misinformation that, or misunderstandings maybe. Regarding, uh, what, what is going to be proposed. And I'm glad to answer any questions and, uh, you know, if you, if you wish, we'll be glad to. Uh, obviously, uh, when, when the time comes for an approval, we, we have the plans. But I, I know this is focused on the zoning and not on the, the proposal itself, so.
Thank you, Liam, uh, we have somebody online, Chris Trombley. You wanna unmute?
Thanks, yeah, um, thank you. Would it be possible to ask a question for Paul?
Yeah.
What's, could you just clarify the net impact to housing? That, that lot, there's a lot of pavement there, um, and it's currently zoned R fifteen. And just, but judging by the, um, by the current and the proposed. Um, I don't see where, uh, it's hard to determine was, is it a net gain for housing, is it a net loss, what's, is there an offset?
Sure, uh, Chris, this is Paul Connor, um, the C one R fifteen, which is the existing district. And the C one auto both allow fifteen dwelling units per acre. So, in terms of any trade between those two, it is at least from, from the regulation side, neutral. Where there is a small change is the parcel that I showed a few minutes ago. Immediately north of Holmes Road, uh, where there's, uh, two auto dealerships and the fire station. That is proposed to go from s, commercial one R fifty, uh, sorry, commercial one auto to commercial two. The commercial two district allows for housing but at a slightly lower density, so it's seven units per acre instead of fifteen. So, there is a, uh, there are, there's a couple of parcels there that at least conceptually have a. Lower residential density, they are, as I said, the fire station and two auto dealerships presently. So, that's, that's the net difference and I can look up the acreage for you, it's about three acres of land.
Yeah, so, that, that sounds negligible, um, the, we've been targeting kind of this area for housing redevelopment. And actually, up, you know, an area to upzone from our fifteen. Um, we look at examples such as Butternut Grove in Winewski where they redeveloped a parking lot. And they put in permanent affordable housing, uh, at mixed income. And this, um, you, you look just north of it, you know, this huge parking lot there that, um, I think that's the, the Parma property. It's just ripe for, um, adding more housing and it, it sounds like we're making an accommodation to put in a dealership. In, in a prime location for mixed income housing. This lot is two minutes from the, the number six Shelburne Road that runs every twenty minutes. Um, when we talk about smart growth, like this is the, the plot of land where we wanna see it. We've, we've consciously made decisions as a city that, you know, we're not gonna build here, we're gonna build here. And, and yet, we're, we're really pushing to put in an auto dealership and really lock in that pavement. Um, and, and we just heard from the owner that, or the, um, the proposed, uh, new tenant. Um, that they kind of wanna keep it the way it is, i, it seems like we're foreclosing on our opportunity for, um, redevelopment there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And I believe you had your hand up earlier, sir.
Well, I wanted to, uh, just address the, um, one fellow, um, Matt, was it, I think? Yes, um, that had mentioned about, um, uh. Every auto dealership, uh, putting in fast charging. And I, I, I see that as false, you're, you're generally not going to just automatically going to put in fast charging at every dealership. Nissan was special in that they, they made a point of. Being, being good about that. Um, and I do think that it does, uh, stand a, um. A concern for auto dealerships that don't. But. Because, uh, you know, Tesla does have that kind of extra oomph. But, um, yeah, I, I just think it's baseless.
Point of clarification, they will be required, they will be required to put in fast charge.
Oh, they will?
Yes.
I had not heard that. Okay, okay. Okay.
It's not false, it's not baseless.
Okay, okay. I know where. Okay, and, um, I've forgotten what the other thing was I was gonna say.
Thank you.
Oops, excuse me, I guess part of the problem is the trading of zones.
Actually, I'm sorry, if you can give us your.
Talk closer.
And give us your name too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Kathy Seward, um, and again, a thirty-five-year resident of South Burlington. Um, and three children moved back to Vermont, so we're very happy about that, um. Uh, I, I, I wanna distinguish the difference between having Tesla come in and having a zoning change. You can zone, I assume you can, the, the problem is that other changings. The various zoning changes are causing, um, difficulty with people. You could change the zoning at Lowe's and the old Hannafords to allow car dealerships. And it looks like there's a piece of property next to that that will remain for housing, there's a lot there that's been there ever since. Hannaford Drive was built, what, ten years ago or more? When Lowe's, there's the land there that could be for housing, there's land other places for housing. So, I guess I wish we could separate somehow or another, people, whether their, um. Concern is about Tesla moving into South Burlington as opposed to all the other zoning changes, does that make sense? So, you could change the zoning for Lowe's and Tesla without interfering with others and make other changes in other ways. You're trying to keep an equal amount of zoning in the different, and I don't understand, but C one, C two, C whatever, um. But that doesn't mean, there are, you know, thousands of people in homeowners in Vermont that own Teslas. And the service would be greatly appreciated and can, you would be a huge convenience for those of us with Teslas. Um. And so, if you can work out the other zoning issues to not upset other citizens in South Burlington would be great, really appreciated. Because I think we, a lot of us would appreciate having a service center a lot closer than three hours.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? No? All right. So I guess we need a move to close the public hearing now.
I moved to close the public hearing on LDR. Sorry, LDR. Let me get my numbers out here.
Twenty-two oh seven and twenty-two oh eight.
Close the public hearing on those two LDRs, LDR twenty-two oh seven, LDR twenty-two oh eight.
Before you just before you close the hearing, I just want to make two administrative notes. One, I if you did see your email today, there were four emails that came in today from individuals who each in their own ways supported the change. In addition, just for the public, at your last meeting two weeks ago tonight, you had a discussion about if you choose to proceed with this amendment, that there were some distinctions between the Commercial One Residential Fifteen District and the Commercial One Auto District that you said you would discuss this evening as possibly aligning them a little bit more so that any land that became Commercial One Auto would still have these uses, and we'll go over those in a few minutes, but I just wanted to have that on the record in your hearing.
All right. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Bye. All right, the public hearing is closed. Commissioner, discussion?
I mean, I have a few notes here. As I said, thank you. Sorry, can't hear myself talk. So I I want to repeat that maybe now's a good time. We did not discuss specific impact on the businesses within the areas that we would be changing. We did talk in general terms about the goals of the housing. But I just wanted to say, you know, we did not specifically go in and and address what would be happening to the businesses specifically that are impacted. I also wanted to say, somebody mentioned something about the what is the true impact on the neighbors? And I have a, and I also heard someone say it's a good thing to sell cars. So let's just change all of it to auto. Those two comments for me are a concern because as soon as auto comes in, we lose our opportunity. As soon as auto takes possession of a parcel to use, we, South Burlington loses the opportunity to receive the local option tax revenue. We received local option tax revenue when Hannaford was active in that site. Right now, we basically don't. We probably get something from the Halloween shop. But we don't, when it's vacant, we don't. But auto is auto sales and renting is excluded from local option sales tax. And in our last meeting, we put on the front page of what is currently our draft of our comp plan to be fiscally responsible, or we had good language around that. So I think that to at least, I know Ted brought this up before. I'm not saying it should be the deciding factor, but definitely in terms of expanding auto, that's a concern to me because I don't, South Burlington has a lot of work, infrastructure work that we need. And we need that local option tax. Taxpayers cannot afford to continue covering all the bills. So the I think that this this body needs to very, very competently understand what zoning changes impact our city's ability to generate the local option sales tax. And and so I'm putting that out there. And I I did, I wanted to learn about that myself. And so I did ask Martha Lyons, our tax assessor, to help explain this to me. And she wrote an extremely amazing email, and I didn't realize how much work it was going to take for her. So I am grateful for Martha's response and I'll forward it to everybody, but it explains in detail under what circumstances the local option tax comes forward. But I don't know if we want to talk about it now or if I'm just making this statement and then it's on on the wall. But definitely towards comp plan and perhaps for this, I think we need to acknowledge that again, to Ted's point before, that we would be removing local option sales tax from that parcel. If it if it go becomes auto, we're opening up that possibility. Second thing, I just want to point out that it was not brought up today, but it it kind of came out in different. I want us to be very clear that Hannaford, the current property is right across the railroad tracks from one of our new habitat blocks. And that's something we didn't discuss specifically. Right across the railroad tracks is the off of Red What is that? I don't I don't know which habitat block that is, but off of Central. And I don't know if the if we had the opportunity to start again, I don't know that Article twelve would allow that kind of impervious surface so close to the habitat block with our buffers. So if because they're not regulated to use the same space, it would be awfully nice if some more consideration was made to be as protective as possible with the habitat block that is right next to that parcel. My last comment was specifically, we did not talk about decreasing, I know that we said we're we're changing that one part of that Holmes Road corner from C one to C, C one auto to C two, but I didn't, you know, collect the or connect the dots. That means we're going to be looking at the possibility of a C one at R fifteen versus what would it be now, R seven? R seven. So I mean, it's it's currently an auto business, which is why I didn't really process that. But since this is a zoning change, I guess I would wonder, why couldn't we just keep have that? Why wouldn't we just keep it at least C one red all the way down to homes? Why give up the possibility for that housing density there? You know, why wouldn't we just have the red extend across the street and just keep that corner as it was at the higher density of the seven? The C one R fifteen in the event that it ever is no longer what it is? That's a, it's something, I don't know if I make a motion that we consider amending that, but it doesn't.
Let me, let's see if there's any other comments, gentlemen?
Sure, so you know, I think what we propose here is is a good balance, honestly, to maintain roughly the same space for C one auto as we've had. And to shift somewhat the incentives along Shelburne Road to housing. So, you know, I hear the objections, but I I I guess my own sense is what we've done here is 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 appropriate. You know, in terms of rezoning the land south of Nissan, I mean, that's what planning zoning does, right? No one has a vested interest in how parcels that they don't own are zoned, right? I mean, things change. So and I think I think this is an appropriate change.
Michael?
Yes, I'd like to pick up on something that Matt Cota said that it's not for now, but I think that
Yeah.
I think we I'll I'm picking up on something that Matt Cota mentioned. It's not for now, but I had made a suggestion when we were discussing this whole issue that since many of the allowed uses in C one auto, C one R fifteen and C two are similar overlap, why not create a new zone for the entire periphery or stretch of land on either side of Shelburne Road, perhaps from Swift Street to Allen Road into a C two, but with R fifteen residential. So we don't lose any residential and we simplify the whole zoning issue. I know we cannot do that now, but I think it should be a very high priority for us going forward.
Paul?
Sorry, it was in my email of September twelfth to the all of you.
I just think the idea that that property is something that you're actually going to buy someday is really hypothetical. I don't
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
What did you say?
What I said was that if down the road I have to expand or somebody wants to buy me out, okay? Then I'm landlocked. A Nissan is coming out with more electric cars. We already have two. And it's got to be more because my business is going to change. So now I'm going to be able to sell gas cars. So if if we need to expand, you know, I mean, I guess the thing is, this is it. Why doesn't Tesla just buy those pieces of property that are its own? Why do you have to change the rules for them?
We we're responding to an application, not to any kind of imagined scenario. We we can't, we're just responding to
We're discussing up here, so we'll we're gonna take a break here. Paul, you you were saying you you were
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna, you already have said that you sell a lot of electric cars. I mean, Tesla's moving in, Tesla will be a competitor for you.
I guess I I go back to Monica's point. We we really didn't get any feedback on the landowners of Long Shelton Road, whose, you know, property we're changing the zoning on. I know Joe Larkin is one of them. I mean, those are all pretty established commercial properties. I certainly hear what this gentleman says about his auto dealership, but that's not land he owns. So the the expansion is a hypothetical scenario. But I guess my question to you, Paul, is that you didn't hear from anybody that had land on that stretch that we proposed to take that designation away from?
Uh, no, I think everyone that spoke with me has spoken with you other than the four letters that you received and the media, but.
So I I guess my feeling is that we we've, I I think we've we've done a pretty good job with that. Kelsey, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify with recent soon, likely soon to be adopted changes to the TDR program. The effect would be that a C two designation and a C one R fifteen or a C one auto all would have no maximum of residential density by units. All the other constraints would apply in those different zones, setbacks and things. But you could buy up to a note, up to however many units you could fit on a property subject to all the other regulations in any of those zones by purchasing TDRs.
I I'm glad you said that because I have a follow up question. But please clarify and remind me, if you were a C two, though, you could build without purchasing a TDR up to that, you could build above that allowable R seven, but you have to start paying for TDRs starting at
You would have to start paying a little start paying lower. It wouldn't necessarily be at seven because there's other things at play, inclusionary zoning units, affordable units, things like that would would come into play as well. So yes, it then there would be no maximum in housing units, but you would likely, without knowing the facts of a given scenario, it's likely that you would have to pay for more TDRs to to reach the same, you know, twenty or
C two versus a C one, which is to to my, to Michael's comment about the R fifteen. I just like, we've got to sell the TDRs. I mean, if if we change something to C R fifteen and people are not going to go beyond that, we we've got to protect that land. The 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 TDRs are the only thing we have that are permanently conserving our most precious resources. So anything
C one R fifteen is fifteen.
I know that, but you your comment before about your idea of changing everything to the something different. But also that leads to my request, and I might make a motion that we at least change this map to maintain the C one R fifteen converting it to non-auto at the northwest corner of Holmes and Shelburne Road as it is right now. Just removing the auto without reducing that.
We can't remove it. What are you talking about? You can't remove the auto on that parcel or the auto.
I know that, but for for when it goes next, I mean, we 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 already have. With this change, we've removed the auto.
No, C two auto is permitted in C two.
Oh, we kept the auto.
Yes, yes.
So you have the authority to change if you choose. By changing it from C one auto to C two, the it retains auto dealership as a permitted use, but you're right, it does lower the residential density.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the residential density decrease.
Convert it to to something that wasn't auto, then the dealerships themselves could continue to exist, but they would not be allowed to expand their buildings or their parking areas in any way because they become non-conformities.
No, I restrict that then because I know that people could still do it, the Kelsey's point, they just have to buy more TDRs, which is actually a good thing. So, okay, oops, sorry, forget that. But I I would just say really trying to be not brand focused. We have moved auto off of Shelburne Road where we want to have more, but we have now added that auto to the exact opposite side of a railroad track from a habitat block. And that's something I didn't realize because we were, I was so focused on the the this side of the railroad track and all of our maps. Is there anything we can do with this rezoning to give to build in more buffer, Paul, for that habitat block?
Isn't that a storm pond right there? At the left of the Hanford Building, is that a storm pond?
That is correct.
So that that tree area is not something that could be developed then, yes?
I know, but our habitat block buffers are
So that provides the buffer.
Well, I'm part of it, like, but not down below at the I don't know, is that is that adequate? And there's so much, I mean, you know, they they're if we're changing, we're looking at zoning and I'm trying to stick with that, but we know that the first potential tenant has a huge impervious surface, and they say that they're going to have about fifty employees. They have a huge building. It just would be so nice if through the zoning, we could do something, given its location right next to a habitat block that could protect that more, and I don't know what options we have.
I guess I I think it's protected by the storm pond and the buffer that's there already. It was the Hannafords for quite a while before that.
And it wasn't a habitat block until Article twelve. So Paul, do you have any response to that?
I have a question, Moni, are you talking about the land that's
Talking about the
East of
The Hannaford Building.
The railway line or west of the railway line?
Well, I'm making the comment that we did not specifically stay state that the land to the west to the west of the railroad is a newly identified habitat block from Article twelve. And I'm just asking, with this reasoning, you can see the zoning is going all the way to the railroad. Just while we have, while we're doing this, since it's not, doesn't have the, well, it could have the potential in the zoning to be residential. And and then in our residential, we have to require all of the civic space. And, you know, so when it is residential, there's an opportunity at least to incorporate, you know, do something that's a little bit more gentle with that area. I'm just saying, while we are in this position, is there anything we could do to provide any more buffer for that habitat block?
Andrew?
I would love for our regulations to provide buffers around habitat blocks. I don't believe they do. But that is discussion that I'd love to engage in to provide a fifty or a hundred foot buffer around all of the habitat blocks in South Burlington. I think it's a separate discussion and it's great that Monica raised it because I think it's important discussion.
I've asked for it to be done. I emailed to recount from the commission on August the eighteenth. Two requests, one was add buffers around habitat blocks.
I believe we had a pretty thorough discussion about that in Article twelve and we 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 did establish some buffers, but not as much as you guys wanted, I don't think. So Paul?
The habitat blocks in Article twelve have a geography that you establish, but they there's not a buffer beyond what Arrow would drew. In this particular instance, it it predates me, but Um, in this particular instance, uh, it it predates me, but the green area that you're seeing adjacent to the lows and the Hanaford was. The subject of multiple years of stormwater management litigation. Uh. And so there's there's the likelihood that that changes in any substantial way is is low. Uh, and. A reuse of existing. Paved surface would would be likely retaining exactly as it is, I suppose, in a redevelopment. The city could say that if a building is removed, that there's a smaller portion of it that can be. Uh, that can be built on the challenge there, of course, then because that might might become a disincentive for the re redevelopment, but I think as it stands now. Until and unless there's a major redevelopment, it's it's not likely to see major changes.
But if it is at any point in time, whether it's the first tenant to use it or a future owner, tenant, whatever, if if there is a significant. Rebuild, we there would be that opportunity. Is what you're saying.
Um, if if the regulation so chose, I would say right now the the properties, especially the current, the the former Hanaford property is probably well below its maximum in terms of. Both lot coverage and building coverage, but those stormwater facilities exist to treat. A fairly large area. And again, it predates me, but there's a a long multi-year history of design and uh. Design of all that that.
Well, I hear what you guys are saying about the buffer increase. That's not a discussion for right now, I think, though.
No, I would second you on this comment. I think a great idea for to put it on our work plan.
We certainly could talk about.
I don't think it exists now.
Andrew?
Yes, could we get back to Paul's um? The subject of aligning the uses. Allowed uses that are in the package here. Um, Paul said he that was the that was the next item for discussion.
Well, let me, let me, let me just clarify. Are are we all okay with the rezoning that we propose?
I, you know, I just would want the city council to. To, we did not discuss in depth, um, and I I just regret that now in general for any zoning change. Um, because I'm just, there's so much happening on the school side and the local option tax does not go directly to the schools, but South Burlington is going to be spacing a. Tax increase year over year because of some the ways that the state's looking at per pupil. Tax. So we Hanaford, when it was Hanaford in that location, had a tax revenue. Local option tax. It doesn't any now anymore because it's abandoned. I think it would just be wise for us, or at least the city council, to know what. Local option sales tax was generated before to understand what. Bottle would not be generating. That said, no one's been interested in the building and Hanaford next door won't allow. Um, you know, competitors, so I but I do just hope that the city council looks at every zoning change. With an eye on what is the impact on tax revenue.
Just just one um minor note of clarification. Uh, it. It's the the council and you can know whether a property went from uh. A a business that was collecting local option sales to one that is not. However. The state does not provide us a property by property or business by business assessment.
Okay.
We get one check with no further information citywide, which is a fascinating thing, but it is a black box of what is provided to us as a singular number a couple times a year.
Okay.
Okay, um. The uses, aligning the uses. Michael, you had a question on that?
Well, I've looked, I've looked over them and I think um, I I agree with all the changes that Paul has proposed. Um, I don't see, there there's nothing further for me to say. Um, I'm in full agreement with uh what Paul has listed. They in fact. Coincide with some of the suggestions that I'd made earlier. Um, in another in another context, but uh, I'm happy with with what he's proposed.
Any other commissioner feedback?
The kennels and stuff are the parts that are not right.
Right. So so just for anybody who happens to be watching at home, what what you're seeing on the screen here is the table of uses uh from this from the zoning. There's three columns, commercial one, uh, residential fifteen, which was the red, which previously saw commercial one auto, which is the blue and commercial two. Which was the yellow slash purple. And what is being proposed here is to have uh. Additional uses allowed in C one auto that would further make it similar to C one, so that the big distinction between the two. Becomes um, the only distinction between the two becomes uh auto sales. Um, are allowed in C one auto, but not in C one R fifteen. You discussed at your last meeting that you would not allow kennels and and similar uh. Animal shelters, that kind of thing in the C one auto. So the net effect of that is that. You would have fewer places where those could exist um in the city. And then I believe there was one. Other that uh is a distinction between the two, and that is uh shopping center, um, which is somewhat of a dated use, but they're sort of. Uh, uh, large facilities with multiple um different tenants in them. So and then I I show just for.
That's not permitted in the C one. Where was that one?
Not uh, it's permitted in C one, but not in C one auto.
I see.
And then the C two district is shown for comparison and because you decided to add, you proposed to add municipal facility because the fire station is in there.
Well, if if no other commissioners have any comments on that. Then I would move to approve the amendments. Um, to the land development regulations, L D R twenty two oh seven and twenty two oh eight with the proposed changes presented in this meeting's packet. And to approve the amended planning commissioner report presented to the. At this meeting's packet and submit submit most to the city council.
Second, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, I believe that is done.
Right, thank you. And Sue, that was five zero, just in case uh. Just to make sure you have the minutes correct.
All right, uh, so.
So can I ask those a follow up? What and do I just? I mean, personally, South Burlington established auto being along Shelburne Road before Act sixty eight existed. Act sixty eight's here. It changed the way South Burlington schools benefit from our tax. If. What can I do to ask the city council to be very mindful of that when they look at? Really any auto um. And any zoning changes? Should I attend as a public citizen at the city count at the public um? At the city council's public hearing? What's the? Do I make a?
You're concerned about the loss of sales and use tax when the auto.
Just in general, and I don't want to make it specific to this one. It's it's really been highlighted for me with this, um, but I would think every time there's a zoning change, it it should be considered. I mean, if all of that auto. Left and it all became hotels and conference centers and we would have a. A lot more local option sales tax in our town, you know?
I mean, there's still, they're very viable businesses.
Just asking where I can have my voice, how I can share my voice. Do I do it as a citizen or do I do it as a?
Probably as a citizen.
Is that?
Well, I guess I'd say that there's also nothing precluding you as a commission from including. All of the topics that are part of the comprehensive plan, whether they're natural resources of housing and housing affordability, economic development, taxation. Uh, the implications of uh zoning and of long-term planning is in your wheelhouse. It is also in the council's hands and certainly as the preparers of the budget, they are. Looking at it closely, but uh, you know, I I guess it can be both. And certainly as you develop your comprehensive plan, consider what are the metrics by which it's important to make future decisions in the community.
So. I'll go as a resident then, or what does everyone want to do?
Maybe a question for Paul. What what would be the process? For South Burlington to effectuate a change? So that auto dealerships will include, would we be required to pay the local option tax?
That's the state handles that. That's not, that's not our.
Think it essentially would be uh, the process would essentially be to uh. Begin with our South Burlington delegation to the legislature and then. Have the legislature consider it. It's entirely a. In the hands of the legislature.
I'll take care of that. All right, uh, okay, so we are on to, I'm sorry, yes. Liam, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say the uh. Vehicle sales are um, are not subject to local. But this is a service center. Um, there are potentially, as we talked about, potential batteries, uh, solar uh batteries. So it's not that there will be detailed sales there, so. You know, there may be a lot more often generated from this than if this began a clothing store.
Uh, just so um, I I just want to repeat what Mr. Murphy said for anybody who's online. So Liam Murphy representing Tesla said. Uh, well, can you come up to the mic and say there's a number of people online?
Uh, just for your consideration, um, this is going to be a sales and a service center. Um, and the service, uh, I do believe would be subject to the local option tax. It's just the vehicles that are taxed that. Already paying six percent, I believe, to the state um, that aren't subject to the local option tax. But there are tires, parts uh, and other things that are going to be sold in connection with a uh. Uh, and any uh auto dealership that would be there. And my guess is that will generate a substantial amount. Of local option tax and maybe a lot more than if, you know, uh, a a clothing store moved in, which is totally exempt from. Um, uh, tax, uh, sales tax at all. So I I just don't want to, it's not, it's not a yes or no answer in this question about that the entire. Property is only the vehicle sales themselves that would be exempt.
According to Martha Lyons, currently there is no local option tax that any car dealerships or service centers pay.
Uh, I'll.
So if you can, if you can go get the state to fix that, we'd be, we'd be very much appreciating.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, then. Matt?
That's just to provide a point of indication. The purchase and use tax on auto sales is so that when someone travels to Brehman's New Jersey or to Claremont, they enter and comes and registers their car, he will failure and gets a green plate, but they also pay.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, let's see, we are.
Excuse me, Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yes, Chris.
Yep, um. This this decision to add two more auto districts and prime residential mixed-use area is an embarrassment for South Burlington. I'm flabbergasted by by the planning commission's decision to do this. You know, I don't want to hear another complaint about smart growth development. You're adding, you're locking in impervious services and blocking um residential development. You know this is going to a car dealership. It doesn't matter who's doing that. Like this is in prime area and just the tone deaf from this planning commission is just absurd. Habitat humanity, we're trying to put in a couple duplex or a complex out in an existing residential neighborhood. You haven't even responded to their request. And here we are, after all this time, you'll bend over backwards for Tesla, but you won't even make any consideration for affordable housing? This is unreal. This is, where is this planning commission going? This is unacceptable.
I'm not, I'm not going to accept that. They are vacant lots very close to both Hanaford's old store and. Uh, Lowe's and vacant space south of Lowe's. Focus on that.
We live in a gated community, a planning commission that reinforces that.
Mister Chairman, and Chris, I'm not finished. We are trying to make South Burlington business friendly if we can. We've got a reputation that we are business unfriendly. And we have, we have to take that into account as well. So I'm, I object to your your characterization of the.
The Affordable Housing Committee has turned that out and asking for help for redevelopment. And with, again, with no answer for the planning commission. Where are your priorities? Is this a gated community where we're only going to put in auto dealerships just for the affluent? I'm sorry, this is, this is terrible. Thank you.
Chris, I appreciate your feedback. I don't totally agree with you, though, but we do appreciate your feedback. Okay. Item number seven, ARPA provide feedback has requested to city council concerning ARPA funds allocation.
Yeah, so this, the planning commission back in March, uh, March eighth, twenty twenty two, provided some feedback. Um, and passed a motion forward to nothing suggesting that the remaining ARPA funds that have not been allocated already. Be roughly allocated one third for housing, one third for open space and parks, and one third for a future undetermined use. I included the minutes of that meeting in your packet for this week. Um, the city council has now officially and formally invited um all committees in the city to provide feedback. Um, for um special city council meeting on November thirtieth at six thirty. Uh, the point of having this uh agenda item is to see if the city, the planning commission wanted to. Hold with the with their existing recommendation from March, if there's anything to be updated or changed, or if there's any other feedback. That the commission wanted to provide to city council for that special meeting.
Yes.
Michael?
Um, I would suggest or propose that the. Unallocated bucket, the one third that's unallocated, be used to fund staffing. And other costs associated with the South Burlington Climate Action Plan um implementation. There's nothing in, I believe, there's nothing in the fiscal F Y twenty twenty three budget. To cover uh the costs of implementing the the climate action plan. And so this one third would help. We know we need extra staffing. Uh, in in the implementation and there'll be other costs. So to fill this, just partially fill the gap. Of no funding in F Y twenty twenty three, I propose we use that one third bucket for that.
You're talking about the future undetermined?
Big one.
You were talking about the future undetermined use.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Speaking of that, that money, when does that money have to be spent by?
Uh, I believe it's end of twenty twenty four or twenty five. I have to double.
I believe it's twenty four.
Twenty four. Andrew?
Wasn't here for the March discussion, so this is all fresh for me, but um, I I agree with Michael and I'm looking at the um. I guess responses that were community generated. Where the community was just asked, well, you know, what do you think without having to pick a predetermined category? And climate change was the fourth um highest. I think response given by the community, even though it wasn't one of the. Things that the community could otherwise select in the other question. So I I agree that that at least that one third. Should go to support the climate action plan and in particular, the hardest. The biggest challenge I think that we're going to face as a community and as a society is how to change over existing housing stock. Away from fossil fuels and it's going to be really expensive. And a lot of people are going to need help with that over the next decade or so, and I think we should devote. As much as we can to that effort um to um support, you know, changeover of. Gas furnaces to heat pumps and um. Gas hot water heaters to heat pumps, et cetera. So that's, that would be my um. Vote for where we'd spend unallocated funds.
I actually wasn't here for that meeting, um, but um, I. I agree with certainly the way it was divided up. Um, I I would just say that. Um, open space and parks. Um, I I I think to use these funds for one time to try to acquire more open space would be a huge win. Um, so I would certainly love to say, keep that part there. Um, housing, I'm not sure what. When we say housing, I mean, obviously what you just talked about is housing. Uh, so I'm not sure. You know, that that could be a pretty broad spectrum. Um. The other third, undetermined use, um, I I hear what you're saying, Michael, about the climate change. Um, I I would. I would advocate for putting it more towards open space and parks, but that's my personal preference.
Yep.
I have a comment on it. Um, I would really like to see um. The city purchase some T D Rs. I don't know if it comes from the parks part, if it comes from the, I mean, but talk about climate change. If we don't buy those T D Rs, if somebody doesn't buy those T D Rs. That is our most precious land and the only way to permanently conserve it. that the city can do is to buy those TDRs. So I would very much like to see them purchase some TDRs.
Just as a quick point of clarification, purchasing TDRs is not the only mechanism that a city would have to cons- permanent, permanently conserve, um, parcels of land, but it is one option and it is something that is um, transactional and fairly, uh, well-established.
Right, the LDRs cannot, right? I'm ac- it's accurate for me to say the LDRs don't have a way, planning commission doesn't have a way to recommend a change that would permanently conserve that to buying the TDRs is probably the only.
Um, if you, if you want to say it that way, then yeah, yes, but the city of South Burlington has the opportunity like any other municipality to um, purchase conservation easements on, on land, or there's a few other legal mechanisms that can be used, um, that would have a similar con- conserving effect, um, and in, include, up to and including buying the underlying property itself and not just the development, right?
Okay, so a focus on purchasing the land currently associated with TDRs.
Open space. Paul Angles, did you?
Yeah, I just, um, in reading through the survey, um, it seemed to me that um, a category that's been completely ignored is childcare, you know, that a lot of people responded by saying childcare was their number one or number two, uh, the use for the money. So I don't have any kind of axe to grind about it, but um, I think that we should acknowledge that, that there was strong support for childcare.
Um, what do you need from us for this in terms of?
Um, I mean, from my perspective, it sounds like the commission is generally affirming what was said in March for the approximate one-third, one-third, one-third bucket with one-third going to housing, one-third going to open space and one-third going to something else. There's some difference of opinion amongst the commission about what that something else can or should be. Um, climate change, open space, I would say those are not exactly interchangeable, but they reach, they go towards similar things. Um, conversion of housing stock to um, alternative energy, renewable energy, not alternative anymore, shouldn't say alternative, um, is I guess I don't know, I don't know if I need, this, this is recommendation going to the planning, to the city council, um, as comment from the commission. I am very happy to write this up in, in the way that it's been discussed. Um, I don't think we need to have a singular message coming from the commission, especially when it feels like much, much of the, of the, what has been said as commission priority is in line. Um, I would include Paul's comment, uh, reaffirming the public's desire for focusing on, on childcare. Um, and I guess Paul, do I need, Paul, would we need anything more formal than that?
I think it's entirely up to you. If you would like to have a summary of this discussion and, and share, that's what we're happy to do. If you would like to take a vote and say we'd like to modify the third, it's entirely what you would like to say to the council and we will relay whatever you'd like. So um, I don't, there's no rules.
Could, can I point to clarification? Duncan, so you would like more than a third to go to open space?
Uh, that, that's my personal preference. Um, I, I, I think it's, i- if we could take these one-time funds and acquire more open space, um, I think that's a, a huge win. Um, it's, it's, to me, that's that's the biggest bang for the buck. I hear, I hear what you're saying. I mean, you know, childcare was number one in the thing, um, and I, I think that's something as a community we need to work through, but to take these one-time funds, I would love to see him do that, but.
No, not too many people more passionate about preserving the open space than I am. So I really appreciate that, but we do also have a climate crisis and we also need to change our housing stock. And I think we just need to be able to do both those things.
And we have a open space fund.
Hmm.
Um, I, I'd like to comment, make two comments. Kelsey, uh, you said climate action. It's not just climate action. It's climate action plan implementation funding.
Yep.
Uh, that I'm talking about, which could be staffing and other costs. And I'd like to make a comment on the survey because I think it was flawed. There was no question in that survey about the threat of climate change. Um, and I'm theorizing, hypothesizing that if there had been, it would be up there with childcare.
Well, that, that's what I thought was notable, a- a- as, as just a write-in, it came in fourth.
Well, it sounds like the first two we agree on, third for housing, a third for open space and parks. I guess it's the, the last third that there's some disagreement on.
Yeah, so at this point, it's up to the commission, as Paul said, if you want us to write up a summary of, of what was said and the, the different options for the third, for the remaining, you know, the first third and second third is general consensus. The remaining third, there was discussion about several different things that could be included there. Um, or if you, uh, I'm just, I'm just not seeing, I'm not, I don't think it's necessary for the commission to come to a single consensus about what that third bucket should be. I think providing feedback from all the commissioners is valuable to the city council.
Um, I think we should try and give the council some, some, something that's crystal clear and uh, I think we can only do that when all of us, all seven of us are present. And then we can maybe take a, a vote or a straw poll or something like that, but, um, noting down what was discussed this evening, that's great. That would be.
Because the other thing to note is that the one, the three buckets, the one-third, one-third, one-third was, is a, I'm not going to say it's an artificial division, but it, it was, it was created in that discussion, um, on, on March eighth. It wasn't something that was required that it had to be, you know, here are your top three things and they all have to be equal. Um, so a discussion including m- more money for, for energy efficiency and, and fuel changeover, money for childcare, that can all be included in in a, in a crystal clear recommendation to the city council without necessarily having specific dollar amounts allocated to every, you know, line item.
So two, two quick notes on this. One, um, you, if you would like to think about it, we can certainly put it on your agenda for your next meeting. Uh, it's just requested that you have anything that you're choosing to put in writing before the council's November thirtieth meeting. And then secondly, a specific invitation from our city manager that as committees, commissions and individuals, you're more than welcome to attend as well on the thirtieth. Um, so up to you all, if you'd like to, um, w- we're happy to, we, we will summarize it. And if you'd like to also have further discussion on it, your next meeting, we can put it on the agenda.
Uh, but assign only ten minutes.
Well, i- if, yes, if, if we have all of our members here, that would probably be a, a, a more equitable way to do it. Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay. Item number eight, solar production energy efficiency overview or proposed changes to Vermont residential building energy standards and Vermont commercial building energy standards.
Okay, so I assume that everybody has memorized the full, uh, residential building energy standards twenty twenty-three version.
Absolutely.
Uh, and has figured out all of where the OMs, et cetera, go in there. Um, really, there were two main purposes that I wanted to, uh, that we put this on the agenda for. One was to just give you an FYI of where things are headed as to the baseline for new construction, so that as you think about what you may choose to do in the future, you can see what will be happening regardless. Um, and there are some substantial, uh, changes, uh, most notably, uh, all new construction will be required to have solar-ready roofs, uh, which you currently require for commercial buildings, but not for, uh, not for things that fall under the residential building.
Paul, just point, I, I thought that the stretch code does require solar ready.
The stretch code.
Residential.
Uh, it, it is contained within the commercial building energy standards.
No, I, I mean, for res- I'm, I'm pretty sure the residential stretch code requires it because.
I may be wrong, so, uh, it, it becomes, so that, that may be the case. And so I will say statewide, it becomes the standard across the board. The, the other, there's lots of building insulation changes. Um, the other significant change that I wanted to highlight to you was that there is a greater requirement for various levels of readiness associated with electric vehicle charging. Um, so wanted to give you that as a framework for your discussion. Also, if there was any feedback that you wanted to provide to the public service department, the comment period is open. I would say that as somebody who's spent some time with it, a piece of feedback that I will provide is that it is very confusing to understand the different definitions in my view of, uh, charger readiness, because they differ between the different codes as to what one means versus the other one. So, um, that will be a piece of feedback that I'll be providing, but that's really what this item's about, is giving you the framework, uh, to prepare you for upcoming discussion that you may have, uh, as to what you might want to do locally. And if there's feedback that you'd like to be providing to the public service department while their comment period is open to do so.
Yeah, I, I picked out from both the residential and the commercial, the things that I thought would be important for South Burlington to include, um, in its, um, building standards.
Do you mean beyond what they're doing?
Well, like, beyond what they're, what they're doing, I don't know, but you know, a hundred percent LED, LED lighting, for example, um, is in here.
Right, so if it's a requirement in the residential or the commercial building code for twenty twenty-three, it will be therefore required in South Burlington.
Okay.
Because it'll be a statewide.
There's some good things here. Includes energy storage ready area for future battery storage.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, good things like that. Electric, uh, readiness for future electric space heating, electric water heating and electric cooking equipment and dryers. Um, there's some good improvements here. Um, require an electric service panel capable of powering the whole home or apartment with all electric end users. Means the panels have to be sized correctly. Um, some.
So, question for you, Paul. Um, so these two codes, when they become active, they applied, obviously, all new building in South Burlington. How does that mesh with our regulations? Or do we just adopt what, pretty much say, here's what the state says, this is what we do?
Right, so the, the state rules apply regardless. Um, the distinction that South Burlington has is that the, uh, state has the base rule and in some cases, a stretch code. The stretch code has historically been considered what's going to be sort of the next code. It applies to projects typically that go through Act two fifty. And what we've done locally is it says, if we've said it also applies to any development, any new construction locally, whether it goes through Act two fifty or not. So what that captures is, um, commercial and residential development that's below the threshold of Act two fifty, um, and then areas like the city center area that are exempt from Act two fifty. Um, the state, the, the stretch code applies regardless. So that's what we've done locally is we've adopted that stretch requirement essentially.
Okay.
Um, we have other tools that we'll be talking about at the next meeting about orientation of buildings that we apply also, but and that is a important component of energy, but it's not an energy code per se. It's a placement of buildings.
That, that's what I was gonna ask. So it wouldn't be appropriate to comment in response to this, that there be some rules about street orientation, roof orientation, house orientation to maximize solar.
I think you can provide any comments you choose. My guess would be that if it was about roof orientation, that might approximate energy codes. If it was about street orientation, that's not really in the jurisdiction of a energy code per se at the state level.
And I haven't read everything, Paul, but you know, is there anything about roof orientation or is?
I'm not sure. I know that it, it speaks to when one gets, what, what a solar-ready roof, i- it speaks to it in that section in terms of when you no, I think it does speak to orientation in there about, about uh, orienting a portion, a certain minimum portion of the building unless certain circumstances apply, but I would have to double check that before staying as a, as a fact.
We have talked about roof orientation. I don't know if it was with the PUD process.
I think we, we did in the subdivisions and PUDs.
Yeah. So yeah, it, it has been addressed to some extent.
No, I, I know in our LDRs, I know that, um, but we're being asked to comment on the state.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and just one other thing, I know we, we, I hope that we will be considering as a commission here, um, you know, moving beyond solar-ready for commercial and actually requiring solar PV on the solar-ready portion. And, um, from my perspective, I would love to give that comment to the state and have that be statewide, a statewide requirement.
Why not residential?
Well, we can talk about residential and I would love that too, but I think there's some.
There's some. That's a tougher bridge to cross. Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? No? Paul, do you have, are you?
Uh, so I guess, do you want to make a formal comment? Um, not under any obligation to, you don't have to do it tonight either, um, but that would be my question for you is uh, if you have any formal comments that you'd like to make, um, you were empowered to do so.
I think Andrew had a suggestion that, um, not only solar-ready, but solar-equipped for commercial. New commercial. Um, and then I think Andrew mentioned orientation, that means building orientation and roof orientation, perhaps for maximum solar gain. Uh, if it's not in there, but, but those are two comments that I think we've.
I- if it's not in there, it still wouldn't harm us to make a motion to do it. And if it's already in there, they could just say, oh, great, we're already doing what South Burlington asked. So there's no harm in making a motion to do it.
So the motion would be to?
It's a comment that, to make to the um, public services.
Right.
Okay, so, uh, Andrew, would you like to make the motion?
Or I move that the planning commission submit comment to the Vermont Public Service Department recommending that the residential and commercial codes require um, that buildings and roofs be oriented to maximize solar potential and to require that solar-ready zones on new commercial buildings um, be required to have solar PV systems that reasonably maximize, um, those solar-ready zones.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'm actually gonna vote against because I agree with the first part. I don't agree with the second part. So it's four to one.
Okay, we will get that letter in. Thank you.
Okay, on to item number nine, industrial zoning and housing. Consider requests, review and feedback from the Economic Development Committee on possible amendments to land development regulations concerning industrial zoning districts and possible housing allowances. Uh, we had two requests, one from OnLogic and one from the Wright family, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but this, this has more to do with the overall, um, idea of how can we accommodate housing in some of our industrial areas? Um, I think it's, I know, I think I've said this before, um, and I wish Chris Tralby were still on the call here. Um, I think we're gonna have to get really creative with housing um, in areas where we don't have it or allow it now, um, to try to address our, our housing crisis. Um, so with that said.
Can I comment on the rights first and then on the?
I, I, I don't know if we, um, I, I think this was just, this is more to, is this something we want to task the Economic Development Committee with?
I'll come to that, but I think it, uh, my comment is that I don't think we should do anything, uh, and with respect to their requests. It should be deferred until the, um, eight thirty-five Heinsburg Road legal challenge against the rezoning from IO to R seven NC has been resolved. Otherwise, we're gonna be in the middle of it. And I think essentially the Wright family is asking for effectively for rezoning so that they can build more than three homes.
I, I don't think we were gonna take any action on that. This was just to task the, uh, Economic Development Committee with, uh, a request to look into, um, industrial open spa- or, I'm sorry, industrial space and housing.
Yeah, so this, sorry, go ahead, Kelsey. Sure, this is coming from the, um, not, not necessarily coincidence, but the, um, concurrent requests from OnLogic and from the Wrights, um, that are both. Concurrent requests from OnLogic and from the rights um, that are both requesting some version of additional housing. Whether in one case for sort of semi temporary employee related housing. And one another case, building additional permanent homes on a on a family owned parcel. They're not terribly similar, um, but the the thread that runs between them is they are both requesting additional housing allowances. On um, in areas that are currently not zoned uh, for that, either not zoned for housing at all or not zoned for the density that has been um, not requested. Uh, what we are asking is if the the planning commission would like to task. Some of the study of this question to the economic development committee because of the implications that this has for. Future uses in areas like Tech Park um, in the Heinsberg Road area where. Uh, if housing is, the the interaction between housing and commercial and industrial uses can be tricky at best. Um, and whether. Stud studying the question as a bigger comprehensive plan level issue about where we want housing, where we want. Commercial, where we want industrial, um, how we want those things to interact, what we see the future of that kind of business. Um, activity in South Burlington being and how how come um. How well it can mesh with with associated residential uses um, is something that. Speaks directly to the economic development of South Burlington, um, and is something that the economic development committee could be tasked with. Um, discussing, looking further into speaking to the business community, doing all the things that they would like to do with the request, both. In terms of the more short term. Are any changes warranted in the L D Rs, but also and possibly more importantly, in the longer term planning. That goes into uh, the comprehensive plan. So that would be, that's staff's recommendation, um, that the economic development committee be be pulled into this question and be allowed to. Discuss these kinds of these issues and um. Come back to the planning commission with with their with their conclusions, um, but that would be up to you.
Henry.
That that certainly makes a lot of sense. I would, I think we should also, cause I I think this area didn't. Receive a lot of attention during the article twelve discussion. And I think at the same time, we should ask the natural resource committee to look at these industrial open space areas and see if there are changes. In article twelve that we wanted and then hear those two pieces of feedback together as we contemplate future zoning changes.
Yeah, uh, well, I'd made some kind of random notes for myself. That I'm happy to share with with you, I. Cause there's, there is land in. Technology Park and in. Um, Meadowlands, which might be suitable for for housing. So I'd I'd made a note that. If we do this, then. Um, in these, in each industrial or commercial zone, we should set aside or. A a defined land area. Specifically for workforce housing. And one hundred percent of it. Must be affordable for buyers or renters. Who's combined household income doesn't exceed, I don't know, sixty, seventy, eighty percent of Tidham County A M I. All of them or a very high percentage should be multifamily. Single family homes can't be built. Cost effectively for 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 affordability. They're less energy efficient and they use more land. Uh, maybe when we get to it, the commission will define a new kind of P U D. Something like this, a workforce village. We should consider and 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 in. Somehow bring employers and or the employer associations in these industrial zones. To con, you know, see if they're willing to contribute contribute financially to make the housing affordable for the kind of. Um, workers that they need. Um, you know, beta, beta technologies is a good example. They went ahead and bought. Housing for their stock. And they didn't wait for us. Those are just a few. Things that occurred to me while I was reading through. Um, Kelsey's notes. I don't know if any of them are worth. Following up. And then, of course. Uh, article twelve needs to be taken into consideration as well because. The in in the two industrial zones that I mentioned, Meadowlands and. Tech Park, there's some very, very valuable and extensive wetland. It should. Should be protected or expanded.
Yeah, um, me, my turn.
You're Monica.
I thought you said Paul.
Sorry, I said Monica.
I would just, uh, Michael mentioned a P U D. I would just say again, uh, when we were discussing the P U Ds, we did. Well, I asked a few times about um, considering a campus P U D that is to include housing and I'm I'm trying to find the Apple example. Sadly, I'm not sure if Apple went through with it, um, because it was a pre covid. Was it pre covid? But um, there are businesses that are uh, trying to include uh, housing in on their campuses. So I I think it would be a very, very good thing for us to ask them. Uh, I I completely agree with asking the economic uh, development. And I I I don't know why they wouldn't um. Probably see, they they can choose to talk to the housing committee as well. It seems like there's knowledge there that they can share.
Um, so how specific a language you need from us or what?
Right, so what um. I guess what we what we would need from you is what? What would the scope be of your request to the economic development committee and what would the timeline be? Is that something that you? Would want that you you want on these. Sort of shorter term possible L D R changes? Is it something that is more related to the full comprehensive plan process? And are we looking at the economic development committee? Discussing the whole, like every use of all of Tech Park, is it specific to? Certain questions that you would like to ask them?
So Paul, you look like you wanna.
Can I, yeah, can I take a shot at narrowing that a little bit? So uh, the. Questions that you broadly raise regarding the comprehensive plan is essentially your next item on the agenda. We anticipate. These large scale questions going to the. Task to the committees and we hear what you're saying and we are tailoring to specifically. Um, questions that we're hearing come up in discussion to ask them to consider. So when we're talking about the zoning question. I would, uh, the 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 two questions that really sort of came up in the short term for us were. Do you want them to specifically look at, um, let's say the OnLogic request of something in the shorter term, less than a year from now? To contemplate the ability for worker housing and. This is probably on the line between comprehensive plan and zoning. Um, but. As you, looking at this through the lens of economic development. Would you like the economic development committee to be considering? As uses evolve and we move more towards things like form based codes where you where we're agnostic to uses. Are there some areas of the city that should be reserved solely for economic activity because they're not compatible? Even in the future with house, things that are heavy truck usage, for for instance, is that a question that you'd like, is that a? Framing that you'd like for them to be thinking about? I guess those are my two questions.
I mean, I have, I'm sorry.
Um, that's what I had in my mind was, you know, it's another one of these junctures that we reach from time to time. Where form based code, citywide form based code would be an immediate solution to a problem like this. Um, I don't know that we have to have citywide form based code before we can do something like this. We might want to think about using form based code in these kinds of situations. And how possible would that be?
I guess I would say that form based code has grown in its capabilities to incorporate a lot of different. Uh, activities, I would say that um, in dust, heavier industrial uses. Even in a most form based codes that I've seen get called out from a use perspective because there are certain things that you. That are not very compatible with housing, where you would want to make sure that you're not. Um, either putting a future resident in a poor circumstance or from the inverse perspective. Procluding certain types of businesses from able, being able to appear because there's now housing next to it and you never want, and you don't want to create that. It's a much smaller subset of uses than existed. Fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty years ago, we're not talking about, you know, massive rendering plants in Pittsburgh or.
Right.
Uh, or or uh, Chicago, but there are still some.
We're talking about now mostly um. Electronics or digital.
I'm thinking, I mean, that we haven't really dived into it. From my perspective, I think about things that bring in a lot of trucks all night. That's the kind of thing that I think about, like the FedEx facility of if there was homeless right next to that. That's a difficult match because their busy time is literally in the middle of the night when we wouldn't want to have. Lights and back beeping and all that kind of thing, but there may be others. Airports.
Get back on the um. You know, the one versus function, I mean that. To me, I don't know, it just answers so many questions, Alice, you know. That um. I mean, integrating housing with business. So that the form is. This. Is the primary issue, um, and the use is not. I was for me, uh, is an answer to a lot of these questions that we have. And that went about as far as it ever goes. I do want you all to think of that though, you know, that you can really organize all this by form. Rather than by function, I mean, we're so locked into zoning. That is zone based upon use. I mean, even the, you know, the discussion that we had about. About Tesla, you know, you know, is it an automobile, is it for cars, is it for housing, you know? Um, you know, Schubert Road is like a perfect example of, you know, of. Of that kind of situation, you know, people will be living there and there will be businesses there and there will be industry there. And it's all gonna be together in the same place. So I mean, I appreciate the trucks driving in, but. You know, like grocery trucks drove in for Hannah Hertz for years and years in yesterday, so. I don't know. Just that was my little. Crack, you know?
You're allowed to do that?
I was gonna.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Monica was next, yes.
Um, I just was going to say, I think what would be most helpful to get from that committee is a really good understanding of what. Uses, what types of housing would be most beneficial to them? You know, because to help the business, if it is the industrial area and if the intention is to keep it industrial. What what do they need for their business? And then we would be able to look at, you know, how does that impact? The n- natural resources around it and the bigger, but what just purely from a business's perspective, what do they? Need that they can't have right now from this perspective?
Right, and just a reminder that the request was. Though though possibly tricky in the world of zoning was essentially for. Um, employee housing of some form, that it's not necessarily just creating housing, it's the ability to for them to have onsite, which. Brings up some interesting questions and I don't want to have the debate here, but it would be something that we would bring to the economic development committee to wrestle with if. You wanted to task them with looking at this.
That's why I sort of.
I just finished though, that my, so my, what I meant was though. In that, is it permanent housing or is it temporary housing? Like I think they, what I heard before when they were here was they need a place. To ensure that new employees can start. And have a place while they're looking, even if it takes a while to find. So that's what, I think that's what would be helpful to learn from them. Is that what they're looking for? Or or do they say, no, we really want to have. X number of employees be able to be within walking distance on a permanent basis, you know, that's that would be helpful to understand.
Yeah, well, I think in OnLogic's case, and I'm. Not sure about about what's more urgent. They have a request for a training facility. Um, and accommodation for trainees and customers. Uh, visitors, that's one of the things they asked for. The other thing they asked for or is housing. Uh, there's not enough housing available, uh, Lisa. But I can't remember my name, yeah, was at the my wife's rotary and she said she come, there was a big issue. In allowing for people if we want to expand. So I think um, the. Which are the thing, which are the things we are dealing with right now? We're dealing with housing or we're dealing with OnLogic's specific request? Or then you'd be able to accommodate visitors or new employees temporarily, what they called a hotel, but it's not a hotel.
I think we, that's the two questions you talked about is on the short term, is something what um, like what OnLogic is asking for? Possible, is it something they could make work that they need? And also, I I agree with Monica, what? Long term, what kind of housing? Do they need and would work there? Uh, and who would it be for? I'm assuming it would be for employees, but.
Right, and I think the big question of housing in general is, that's the comprehensive plan. It it what's what's your vision for how to meet? The various needs of natural resources, economic development, housing, transportation in the city.
Yeah, so we have, I'm sorry. Now, I I'm sure the the businesses that are uh, that are asking for this for uh, for. Housing um. Within the industrial zones or very close to them, I'm talking about permanent housing and. Affordable and specifically for their employees so that. You know, and and there has to be some some way of qualifying, somebody wants to come here. Uh, would have to qualify uh, by saying, I have a job with OnLogic. And I would like to apply for one of these affordable homes. I think I'm generally not. Not keen on being too prescriptive, but in this case. If we're gonna give the economic development committee some guidance, I think we do have to be a little prescriptive. Cause the housing is permanent and it and it's intended. For employees. In these industrial zones.
Does that help you guys or confuse you guys?
I I was confused by what you said about the housing being permanent, Michael, because I think what we're asked, what what I'm curious to know is, is it? Is that what they want? Is that what they're looking for? Is that what? I I'm within the zone, you know, yes, I mean, greater. Everywhere housing is needed, but within. Within the I O zone. Does it help them to actually? You know. Seek to have permanent. Residences it right there or not, would, you know, what what and 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 for the for the city, for the economic. Committee, not just asking one company, but for the economic development committee to look at all of that land and say. You know, is, would that be a reasonable permissible use, permanent versus? The new employee or the training or whatever else. I I so I don't know that.
We're conflating two things here. Their. Their request for a for a. Training facility which would include. Um, accommodation for. New employees temporarily and visitors and customers. Um, and suppliers is one thing. Um, housing in general, the shortage of housing in general is the issue that they've raised. Separately from that and that that training facility is permanent. I mean, that's a. Multi million dollar project. Um, the housing, well, I don't know if you meant. Temporary housing in 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 trailers or.
Temporary residence, I believe.
Temporary residence, did you have, is that what you had in mind uh, as a possibility? Yeah.
No, I guess that's the question for them. I i- is it that they're trying to make sure that when they hire somebody, they can at least start the job when they say they. Are going to start the job because they have at least a place and they can stay there at whatever rent until they find their permanent place. Um, or or does the economic, would they want? To be able to pursue something like a campus P U D where permanent housing, meaning. Employees can purchase a condo, a one one block within the zone away from their office. Is that something that businesses find to be very appealing?
That's so. So, so, hold on, Michael. So I think what we have is we have a short term question. About the OnLogic request, the right request, it's that purview, and then we also have a long. Longer view comprehensive question, comprehensive plan question about housing in those zones. Um, I guess the the debate is how to word that second question. Or what, what to involve in that second question? I, 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 both of you guys have good points about what, really hearing from the businesses, what do the, what kind of housing would be helpful, what do they need and what's, what could be permissible?
I guess I would just say briefly, well, go ahead.
No, I was just, I was just going to say that there, um, uh, the, the ability to control who purchases certain condos or houses, especially as a second or third purchaser down the road, um, would be likely more difficult than it feels like it should be. Um, so saying you have to work it on logic to purchase one of these condos, um, I, I can't say would be impossible, but, but my gut is that it would be difficult. Um, this is, but this, I'm getting a little bit into the weeds right now. What we, what we want for today is just whether or not the commission wants to task some of these questions to the Economic Development Committee specifically about short-term, shorter-term LDR questions like has been raised by the rights and on logic. We will be going to the Economic Development, um, Committee for their feedback on the comprehensive plan and on how, where housing should be. Um, where, what the future of the economic uses in some of these commercial industrial areas may be into the future and what they see as the interaction between those things. Those are all things that are, that will be occurring during the, as part of the process for the comprehensive plan. And that actually goes into number 10 on the agenda, and so I'll get into that in a second. Um, but right now, I guess the question is whether the commission would like feedback from the Economic Development Committee on um, making changes to the LDRs now that would change uses or the ability to do housing in certain ways in these areas before the comprehensive plan.
And, right, and I'm going to narrow it further to say, I don't, if you're talking about employee type temporary stays, that might be a possible zoning change in, in the, in the next year. If you're talking about long-term housing, I don't believe your comprehensive plan today would allow it. It is very clearly a non-residential district. So I think that is the larger question, but I don't think that even if the Economic Development Committee were to say, yes, allow lots of permanent housing, your plan does not allow it today. So it is a longer conversation regardless on that front. So I guess just to narrow the conversation, would you like the Economic Development Committee over the next period of time to look at the idea of employee accommodations?
Yes, and they must also tell us what the impact is on environmental protection standards.
Just a question, I'm confused though. So employee combinations would be residential housing, once you build it, it's going to be there unless it's a trailer, trailer.
Essentially, I think what they were asking for was more like a extended stay suites type building. I, I feel, if I'm.
But like a hotel.
That's no, they were talking about training when they.
Yeah, that's.
It's, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how their request, um, intersects with
The two things.
Paul, what you said about what the comp plan allows, I guess.
Right, I mean, I think that that's a question that, that would need to be unpacked further. So they, the request from on logic was for temporary accommodations from a period of weeks to a period of up to a year, let's say, uh, for people who are either in training or temporarily assigned somewhere or they've been hired, but they can't find somewhere to live, et cetera.
That would require building some residential.
It would require building.
No, I mean, unless the trailer, like, what does that mean?
It would be a permanent building.
Right.
That the question to be potentially explored is, can zoning draw a difference between what is considered housing and what is considered a long-term temporary accommodation? Like, um, Three Mountain Suites on Shelburne Road is, it has kitchen facilities, it has, uh, it has bedrooms, but it's not housing, it's a hotel, essentially. That's, that's the parsing out and I, that's the debate that we were hoping you might have them have about what the difference is in that world. And is there in fact a difference? And if there's not, then I think it comes back to you and says that there isn't, but it would allow them to unpack this more thoroughly.
Okay, that's so.
And then to the question of environmental protection, I think that's a hard question to ask them because right now, the environmental protection standards apply to, apply as they apply. So to ask the Economic Development Committee how it would impact it, it, there would not be a change today because if they could build and, if they could build a business or if they could build housing next to that business, it's on the same land. I, I think that's a hard question to ask them if you have a different question. That you'd like to ask them.
I mean, where I.
Michael, you did, you had your head up, go ahead.
Yeah, um, there's the, on, on logic is asking for this, call it temporary housing, it's going to be part of their training campus building. They're going to have rooms, bedrooms with bathrooms attached. Um, that's one thing, but we are, we were also talking in a general sense about housing in the, uh, in our industrial zones, which right now is three units per acre, if I'm not mistaken.
One unit per three acres.
One unit for every three acres, which is nothing. So, uh, that, th- those are two qu, two different questions and they can both go to the Economic Development Committee. Um, but they need to be clearly di- differentiated.
No, that's what, that's what we're talking about, yes.
Timescale.
Yes, so I, I sense there is agreement to task the Economic Development Committee with looking at that first question, yes.
Well, looking at both of them.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, the, what, uh, I'm sorry, hold on one sec, Monica. Um, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'll, I'll bring it up afterwards.
Uh, just that, um, again, not being brand specific, that we can use the on logic request as the starting point, but that ideally, they'd be looking at answering that question for any business in there because it could, yeah, okay, thanks.
What would be the timeframe that we would ask them to get back to us with that first question? I mean, I'm assuming, when we give them the question, we say we need the answer by text date.
I would suggest that if you gave them till the end of January and perhaps they can be sooner.
My gut was January as well.
Um, because they only meet once a month, so being realistic, that's only three meetings.
Okay.
And if they can deliver faster, even better.
And on the second question, the more long-distance or long-term housing, do we need to flesh that out now or do we just give them, let's give them that first request and we'll fine tune that second request?
Let's talk about that in item 10 on the agenda, if that's okay.
Perfect. Yes, Andrew.
So just to clarify, I guess my earlier comment, I, I guess my perspective would be while we're considering zoning changes to that, so, you know, that area that presently, um, you know, doesn't allow for this type of facility, I, I think we should at the same time, ask the Natural Resources Committee to consider additional potential changes to Article 12 for that same area and consider those two things together.
I, I believe we are going to involve them in the comprehensive plan discussion, but I don't know, um, that wasn't really in the purview of what we were looking to do right now.
I mean, I, it's, in my mind, it's a little bit going to what Paul, um, Engels was saying earlier with not exactly a form-based code, but being a little agnostic to the uses that if a building or a parking lot or a structure of any kind is impacting an environmentally sensitive area, it doesn't really matter if it's housing or if it's commercial or if it's a school or if it's something else. If, if you want additional feedback on Article 12 in general, um, or in specific zones, that is absolutely within your purview to be requesting from the Natural Resources Committee. Um, and the natural, as has been mentioned, the Natural Resources Committee will be involved in the comprehensive plan process as well. Um, but as to this specific request, um, having different environmental standards applied to temporary workforce housing, like it doesn't quite mesh, um, it's absolutely a request that can be made, it's just a little bit separated from, from this request in my mind.
Monica?
It just seems if we're going to ask that, we should ask the Bike and Ped Committee what their thoughts are on then how people would get around. And the Housing Committee should officially be asked because then we're really getting into stuff. So my recommendation is to stick with the Economic Development Committee because ev- anything they bring us is going to have to be checked against all of the boxes. They're just coming with, you know, a pie in the sky, here's what we would ideally want. And then from there, so much would have to be, you know, discussed. We wouldn't just be taking what they want and, you know, passing it along, so. Let's start.
I mean, Andrew, to address your point, I, I think that we could ask the Natural Resources Committee to look at Article 12, um, but I think that's a longer-term discussion.
Um, yeah, I just think that that particular parcel didn't get, not, not that parcel, that area didn't get a lot of attention. We, there were tons of comments about protecting the grasslands in that industrial park and that area, which didn't. And that, and there's no protection to that. And if we're talking about economic development, we should, in the same breath, be talking about additional conservation. I just think that we should be having those two conversations together. I'm not saying that building the hotel will necess, I mean, I just think those two conversations are important to have together. I don't know what we're focusing on economic development while we're not also focusing on conservation.
It's particularly relevant in the mena, mena lands where there are significant grasslands and huge.
I don't think the unlock, on logic parcel is in metal lands to cross the interstate.
We're talking about housing.
Well, the parcel we're talking about in particular is not in metal lands, it's across the, it's across the streets, it's across the interstate.
Right, but the question to the Economic Development Committee is a broader question, so. Um.
And, and Article 12 did greatly expand what protections used to be there. I mean, Article 12 made big improvements in that area.
I, I don't think Article 12 touched on that area.
Yeah, it did. And it's anything with wetlands, Andrew, is.
Well, I'm talking about grasslands, but okay.
Grasslands we didn't protect.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, we're going to task them with that.
Yep.
Question.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
With a, a timeline of January, beginning of February.
Okay, um, and pertinent to the discussion we just had, number 10. Comprehensive plan, update and endorsement of approach for requesting initial feedback from committees and departments.
Right, so at this point, we are in the process of engaging with the different city committees, um, all of those that have been mentioned, but also, um, committee on pub, on public areas for dogs, the public art committee, you know, et cetera, all the committees that, that we have in South Burlington. Um, in addition, we would be engaging with the staff, uh, of the city departments, including the police department, the fire department, community development, the city manager's office, um, parks and rec, um, all of the public works and stormwater and water treatment, all of those, all sorts of departments, all sorts of people, all sorts of committees. Our intention at this point is to reach out and send a letter, um, asking for some information about um, the key topics that a given committee or department would want to see highlighted in the comprehensive plan. What from their perspective is, are those, those critical pieces of information that need to be included? Either that have already been included and need to be expanded or have not been included at all in the past? Um, and to further what those key topics, what information does the city have or can get easily? Not full new studies, not a, additional consultants at this point. Um, but what kind of information do the committees and the departments need to be able to in, have, um, appropriate and well-informed feedback on the comprehensive plan? Um, I am in the process, process of drafting a few letters, one that would be going to the different committees, that would be providing them with the current comprehensive plan, the recently, um, updated core value statements that, from this, the, that Michael has in his hand, um, and asking them for those, those sorts of initial opening pieces of feedback about what, what they find to be critical in their particular areas of focus. Um, so that's what we're doing now. Um, and the next steps with the departments would be the same asks, but also to set up, um, particular meetings, meetings with those individual, the leadership of different departments for both what they see in their own areas of interest, but also just from their own, their experience, um, being in the community, whether it's about what they focus on or about something completely not separate, but related, related and different. Um, and we are looking to engage with departments in the next month or two and hopefully get those, get some of that initial feedback from committees, uh, in the sort of, sort of a similar timeline within the intention of the feedback from committees being an iterative process where they, we ask them this now and then that informs our next step of discussion and of drafting for updating our objectives and strategies. And then those, those things can go back to the committees a few months later and then it can come back and come back because we're in this timeframe where we have less than a year, um, before we really need to have a pretty well-complete draft done, um, and into the, you know, public hearing process. So having a couple of, of, you know, one to two-month iterative processes with the committees, um, is something that we want to get the ball rolling on. Um, so we just wanted the, the commission's, um, approval and, and allowance for the staff to do, to do that initial outreach for both the key topics and, um, any um, sort of low-hanging fruit information needs, um, going forward. Anything that committees want as longer-term studies, bigger studies, things that require consulting firms, et cetera, that can go into the comprehensive plan and that would be sort of down the road. But just seeing what that initial feedback is from, from all of our different stakeholders is, uh, where we want to start.
And, and they will be given a copy of the goals and visions that we, you just articulated.
Sorry?
Uh, that you, that you just sent to us.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they'd be given a copy of that, um, the, the current, the 2016 comprehensive plan. Um, I've done a little work of highlighting for the different committees, like this section and this section, this section are the ones that are most relevant to your areas, but please, you know, review everything that you'd like to review. Um, yeah.
And the, the last piece of the puzzle that they would be given is, as you talked about earlier this summer, the things that are generally known, whether it's, uh, our anticipated population change, if it's, uh, adopted policy documents, the city, like the climate action plan, like the all hazards mitigation plan, things that they can help frame out their discussion, so it's not a start from zero, it's a, within this rubric, what is the, what is your feedback? And we're gathering all the information and discussion that you've had, like tonight, about Natural Resources Committee discussion, making sure that the comprehensive plan is, has their feedback so that you can be clear and the council can be clear of what are the goals moving forward, um, for the coming decade.
Hello, and, and I have a question about, um, so we talked about committees and what about like public works and fire? Do, is that, are they on the same schedule or do they?
Yeah, I think you may have stepped, that might have been when you stepped out of the room, the department. Yeah, no, I'm sending this, no, it's fine, I'm, I, um, I'm drafting, I have two letters that are drafted, they're very similar, sort of slightly different focus and slightly different tone. Um, our idea with the departments is because it's city staff, we would, um, like to set up, um, meetings with the leadership of the departments, um, because we can do that internally.
So I, I just wanted to pass on, um, something that just happened, um, by me and, so this is me personally, but I'm going to put it out there. Um, I got a notice that, I live on Spear Street, uh, where there is not city sewer. And I got a notice, um, that the Spear Meadow was going to be widening the road in the next week. And, um, I thought, gee, that's really a shame because the biggest expense in extending a sewer line is tearing up a road and dealing with all the traffic. And here, this construction site across the street is going to be tearing up the road and and the city did not have a plan to say, and, and somebody said Burlington has some kind of plan that anytime a road's going to be torn up. It's like, all right, let's look at what the city needs from this while it's torn up. And I don't know if, really, South Burlington doesn't have that, but it would certainly have been helpful if they did. So, um, if there are any areas of the city where a road might be torn up for anything, it would be very good to know, um, if, going forward, um, if we can gain anything as a city from that, like extending sewer line.
Yeah, and our, our intention in the comprehensive plan process is to be engaging with all the stakeholders that we can find, um, including, you know, all the different facets of public works and stormwater, um, uh, water quality, all of these, all of those things would be engaged as part of this process, along with everybody else, like the library and the police and.
And just a brief plug that, um, our city manager now has a structure in place where every couple of months, there's the, in addition to her normal department head meetings, she has, uh, engaged the next level down of managers into, uh, sort of a joint learning session. And, uh, I was invited to, uh, be the presenter on the comprehensive plan to this larger group of about twenty-five staff members. And they were really excited to be able to engage in, uh, looking at the long-term vision of the city, both within their own area of expertise, but also just in their professional lived experience in our community. And, um, a few of them that I have worked with for ten-plus years were really excited to be able to be invited to be engaged in this discussion. So I think it's going to be really, really. Be invited to be engaged in this discussion. So I think it's gonna be really, really fruitful and thank you for your support in advance.
Think that residents would have the same reaction, Paul. Um, I think they would be excited and enthusiastic and happy to be involved in the comprehensive plan also. Question is, how do we reach them?
So there is, um, an outreach plan that has, um, started wheels in motion and would be functioning going forward. Involving a pub, um, meetings with public, um. Professional facilitators. And one of the things that we're looking for for feedback from the committees and from departments is what kind of information? Would you like the facilitators to be trying to get from members from of the public at these meetings? Um, so that is something that's that's. Uh, just one or two steps a little farther down the road.
That's good. I mean, we do have all this technology where we involve people. From their living rooms in the evening.
You said you want. Tell the facilitators what kind of information they want to extract from the public?
Topics to topics to cover, questions to ask, um, things like that.
What what the committees would like to.
Committees would want, what the, what the committees would like to get from members of the, from from the public. What information the committees would like to to get from the public that can be facilitated.
Okay, that would have to be very, very cleverly done not to put off the public. And to into, I mean, my first reaction is, wait a minute, don't you want to hear what I want to say?
Right, right. So let me back up because we talked about this a few months ago. There will be general opportunities for people to provide feedback, what, uh, in, for the community to provide feedback. In addition, the purpose here would be that committees in their area of knowledge may have some burning subjects that they would like to. Uh, tease out, have a community conversation on, um, that is relevant to their area of topic. So it's not in lieu of, it's in addition to.
So they'd like to hear from the public.
On issues that they're seeing are, you know, important topics to really unpack.
Just has to be. Handled with some.
Hence hiring a facilitator to do these things so that it can be done properly.
Okay, so.
We're not in charge of this.
We're we're good on number 10? Yes, okay.
Another thing on number 10. Early on, we had a discussion about, uh, the comprehensive plan being written in plain English. And I hope that you'll continue to be conscious of that. It did seem a bit, um. I don't know what you call it.
Planese. Language. Kelsey and I are challenging one another to see how many fewer pages the plan can be. To still be a comprehensive plan for the city, but to be one that is to the point.
Cliff notes.
It's in the, it's, the current plan is in the two hundreds. I would be, I'm, I would, I would be very happy in the low one hundreds. So we'll see how it goes, but.
Save paper.
All that is the, the only way you get there is by talking in plain English and not adding additional phrases and sentences and paragraphs when they're not needed.
Clever sentence constructions.
Yes.
Okay, uh, it is nine thirty, so.
Eleven, very briefly. The city council held their public hearing on a, uh, on the changes to the T D R program. They, uh, and and related amendments, they made one proposed change that I showed that was in your memo. Uh, in response to some feedbacks from the Vermont Land Trust. The city attorney felt that it was not really changing the intent in any way, just being a little bit clarifying. Under state law, anytime that the council makes a change, they need to provide it back to you for the opportunity to update the report if you so choose. Um, staff doesn't feel that this changes anything, but it is your report. So. You have the possibility of updating a report if you so choose.
I think it would be the right thing to do. So I would move that we accept the changes made by, to the L D R twenty two oh five made by the city council. And update the report and submit it to city council.
We have a second?
That's perfectly fine. The report would not need to be updated essentially because it's consistent, but I would reaffirm that you're comfortable with the report.
Do.
Quick discussion. So just with the, um, import of the chain, if if we don't make, I I'm just not understanding actually what the change is.
So what the, here's, here's the, what Vermont Land Trust expressed the following concern. Under the conservation planned unit development, um, if somebody is subject to a conservation P U D. At a minimum, you must conserve seventy percent of the land and then thirty percent can be built on. The land trust was concerned from a temporal perspective, that if they were to go, let's say today in twenty twenty two. Conserve seventy, eighty percent of the parcel. Then five years from now, they come to take the remaining twenty or thirty percent and propose to build on that. They were concerned that it was not clear enough as to whether they can build on that twenty or thirty percent. Or whether they have to then conserve seventy percent of the remainder.
If it's a parcel based test, you would have thought it would be clear. Uh, did you think it was unclear?
So here's the conversation I had with our deputy city attorney. I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
But when, uh, when attorney, when a, when attorney says, I'm not totally comfortable with this, I say.
Get it then, okay.
Everything else being equal, there's no harm in being more clear.
Cause what, when I looked at, I didn't understand what was changing, but now I understand the context.
Okay, we have.
Second, Michael's motion.
Okay, all in favor? Bye. That's unanimous.
Last item is your minutes.
Minutes, actually, I did have one change on the minutes. I can find it, uh, page two, uh, Mr. McDonald said there is some perspective on the commission now that wasn't there before. I actually said that was there before and it's not there now. So if we could switch that, I'm fine. Uh, with with the change I just made, move to approve, or actually, I'm sorry, meeting a motion.
But you can make.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor? Hi.
Okay, one quick thing for other business, just a reminder that your next meeting is gonna be on Wednesday, the ninth, not Tuesday, the eighth. Because it's election day. So you decided in your calendar to not meet on election day.
How many emails will we get about that?
How many would you like? Daily, hourly?
Oh.
Okay, we will, uh, we will send reminders, but just.
Wait, probably not here on the line.
Eight, nine. See if we have.
I'm not essential, but I'd like to be here.
So that's, that's our next meeting on the, on the eighth or ninth, that's sorry, Ted, send the email. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we are adjourned. We'll send you the minutes.
What about the minutes?
We'll send them to you.
Um, Paul. One more.